Please note that the interpretation is available by clicking in the globe in the bottom of the screen. The time is now six o'clock PM. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September fifth, two thousand and twenty four Prince George's County Board of Education Capital Improvement Plan Public Hearing. In line with policy eighty-three forty-five, public comment, which permits the public to register on-site for public hearings. The public is notified that the testimony registration form for tonight will in fact remain open for the public's live, written, and video testimony until six fifteen PM. Likewise, for future public hearings, a six fifteen PM registration time will be in effect. Again, the registration form for tonight will remain open for the public's live, written, and video testimony until six fifteen PM. The testimony registration form is currently available also on the Prince George's County Board website or directly at www.pgcps.org/offices/board-of-education. Ms. Adley, please take the role.
This is Adam Stafford. Ms. Buddha Strada.
Present.
Mr. Briggs.
Present.
Mrs. Frazier.
Present.
Dr. Harris. Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jungle. Dr. Z Miller.
Present.
Ms. Walker.
Present. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Superintendent House to introduce item two point one, Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six through two thousand and thirty-one. Dr. Coleman, I believe you're going to take it from here. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Board Chair Walker, and good evening, Board Chair Walker and members of the Board of Education, parents, guardians, members of the community, and staff. My name is Dr. Sharoska Coleman, and I have the privilege of serving as the chief operating officer for the Prince George's County Public School System. Joining me this evening is Associate Superintendent for Supporting Services, Mr. Jason Washington, Project Manager Supervisor, Mr. William Smith, and Fiscal Supervisor, Mr. Ricardo Smith. On behalf of Superintendent Millard House II, tonight's public hearing will focus on the school year twenty-two twenty, twenty twenty-six, excuse me, focus on the school year twenty-six Capital Improvement Program. The Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, is the plan of the Superintendent and the Board of Education to fund capital projects during the fiscal year covered by the capital project, capital budget, and the succeeding five fiscal years. Through the CIP, educational facilities are planned, designed, renovated, and constructed based on the prioritization of needs established in the Educational Facilities Master Plan. Tonight's meeting will include a brief presentation by the Department of Capital Programs staff, followed by listening to your public comments on the proposed CIP. The school administration will not respond to any comments or questions posed this evening. The intention is to hear directly from parents, guardians, and other community members. We are looking forward to hearing your input. At this time, I would like to introduce the Fiscal Supervisor for the Department of Capital Programs, Mr. Ricardo Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. On behalf of Director Jackson and the entire Capital Programs team, we are extremely grateful for the opportunity to share our Capital Improvement Program budget with the community and readily await your comments. Director Jackson shared a comprehensive presentation to the Board Committee last week. This presentation, both in video and in print, is available at the PGCPS Board of Education website. We assume you have already or eventually will review those documents. Tonight, I hope to share highlights of that presentation. For the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-six, we are requesting a funding level of a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars, a hundred and fourteen from the county, and sixty-four million from the state. If we extend that to the six-year period for the CIP, that's equivalent to one point seven eight billion dollars. Included in that is thirty-seven million dollars for roof replacements. Certainly an area requiring significant need, given the their, the, the, the status of some of our roofs currently chewed out the district, some of them exceeding fifty years old. Although we would like to complete each and every project for each and every need, there are constraints. One of those constraints is physical available funding. Our preliminary debt target from the bond sale have been shared with us and was shared to be around a hundred and three million dollars. So this, this presents a fiscal funding constraint. But it's also a similar state funding constraint, which we anticipate to be around forty or fifty million dollars for FY twenty-six. Now let's take a look at some of our major projects. We're requesting for our major projects, hundred and eighteen million dollars, most of which have been a con, is a continuation of previously approved projects. There's Sootland High School. Our funding request is thirty-two point eight million dollars, mostly from the county, thirty million dollars, and a small amount from the state, three million dollars. And William Smith, I hope I pronounced that correctly, is also on the, is also on the contract. And we're requesting thirty million dollars, a similar level as the level we requested in FY twenty-five, and that was approved in FY twenty-five. We also requesting thirty-seven million dol, forty-two million dollars for the Cool Springs project, thirty-seven million dollars primarily from the state. So you can see from the major projects, many of them are being funded primarily from the state. And we've mentioned the new Northern Adelphi Area High School. That project is getting started and the permitting and the design stage, and we're requesting for that twenty-two million dollars. And again, most of that twenty million dollars from the state remaining from the county. So those are our major projects, but there are other needs. We also requesting three point six million dollars for county mandates. These mandates are like ADA, the Disability Act, code corrections, asbestos, and three million, three point six million dollars is to ensure safe environment for students, staff, and community as they're interfaced with our facilities. There are a few other projects that we are either currently in a permitting stage. We are not requesting funding at this time because they are being funded by other sources, like, for example, Riverdale, ECC, and Crossland. These are currently in the permitting stage. I would significantly increase in terms of progress in FY twenty-six. But those are at this time initially being used, we, we are utilizing state grants to, to start the initial process for those projects. There are a couple other projects on the horizon, New Southern Area High School. This is a new elementary high school in the southern area, as well as renovations on Bladensburg, and there are two other phase renovations in Longfield and Calverton. Other areas of highlight I would like to share are the systemic replacement, seven million dollars, stadium upgrades, four point five. And of course, we mentioned roof replacements at the beginning of our conversation for about five, five million dollars. This is a summary of the hundred and seventeen million dollars being requested for the capital budget. And I send it back to Dr. Coleman as we await the community comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. At this time, we are ready to open the floor for public comment. Again, Board members as well as members of the administration will not be providing responses. However, we will be listening intently to all public comments that are provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight is a public hearing. Public hearings are for the purpose of hearing the opinions of citizens, not for board debate or interaction with the public. Board members will be recognized by the Chair only for the following reasons. One, to correct misinformation presented in testimony, and two, to add information so that citizen comment may be heard in context. Board members will not be recognized to question or debate citizens or to express their support or opposition to testimony presented on the issue being considered. Registered speakers have three minutes to make their presentations and may not relinquish any part of their speaking time. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comment will be muted, and you will be removed from the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, Chair, Board Member, Superintendent, Principal, et cetera. We currently have thirteen live registered public testimony speakers, forty-seven written testimonies, and zero video testimonies. We will continue adding to the list until public testimony registrations are closed at six fifteen PM. The Chair recognizes the registered speakers for their public comment. Number one, the first person tonight is Lydia Murray, student, speaking on the poor HVAC system at Bowie High School.
Madam Chair, the first person that we have here is number three. And can I ask administration to stop presenting, please, so that we can see the speakers? We have number three here already asked to come over to be a panelist.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Lori Morrow, Bowie High School PTSO, speaking on the needed improvements at Bowie High School. Welcome.
Thank you all for this opportunity to speak tonight. I was hoping to follow our students because, because I love listening to them, and they have the day-to-day experience at Bowie High School that I do not. I am a parent of a senior at Bowie High right now, and I'm speaking on behalf of our PTSO. I am currently the treasurer for that board. So we do have some priorities, and these are things that we brought up last year as well, and we hope that they can continue to gain support from the Board and the Superintendent. Our number one priority across the Board is an HVAC system for the gym at Bowie High School and the main campus. It is a nineteen sixty-five building. It was built without HVAC in the gym, and it continues to be a health and safety issue with our students, with our athletic teams. It's, it is just unacceptable that in two thousand and twenty-four, this is still the situation in our gym. So that is absolutely our top priority. You will see a number of written comments about that as well tonight, including one on behalf of the PTSO. We collected three hundred and three student, staff, and parent signatures in the last forty-eight hours. And I want to point out that that saved you the equivalent of about fifteen hours of testimony, putting those all in one place. So if you need us to continue showing up beyond the Board of Education, we are absolutely happy to do that and continue this advocacy to the county and state level as well. The second concern that we wanted to mention is putting a, a wall or corridor through a breezeway in a section of, of the Bowie High Building. Because of safety issues, those students are no longer allowed to use the outside breezeway, which makes it very inconvenient from two different sections of the lowest level of the high school. And that is something that, that we would like prioritized if possible. So we are happy to work with Board members, work with administration, invite you to our PTSO meetings if you would like to see more about the school or hear more from those three hundred-plus students and staff. So thank you for your time tonight, and we look forward to continuing to work with you all.
Thank you so much. Next is Candace Perkins, Frederick Douglass High School PTSO President, speaking on Frederick Douglass High School's HVAC and school renovation status. Welcome.
Madam Chair, the next person we have is number six.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. Next, we will have Sarah Taborville, Capitol Heights Elementary PTSA, speaking on the urgency of an infrastructure and expansion.
Thank you so much, Board of Education. This is my first time speaking to you, so I'm a little bit nervous. But I, I'm really honored to, to be able to be here this evening. My, I have two children at Capitol Heights Elementary School. It is such an incredible place that we sought a special transfer from our kindergartner who started there last week. And the principal calls the school a uniform, the principal calls the school a unicorn, and I think that's exactly right. Its variety of academic enrichment activities, the rigor of its curriculum for all students, and the incredible student body, teachers, staff, and families really make it a kind of magical place. The building, however, is not so magical. It was built in nineteen fifty-six. And while our PTSA testimony, which we, the written testimony which we submitted to all of you, and I think our PTSA president, Kelly Richardson, is going to speak to, can give the full picture, from problems with HVAC to crack windows to lack of ADA compliance. I'm going to focus on one major issue for my oral statement here, and that is overcrowding and lack of space. Classroom instruction should happen in dedicated classrooms, not on a cafeteria stage that's crowded with other materials and have also, you know, don't have their own proper storage place. It shouldn't happen in a small library or the faculty workroom, but this is the reality at Capitol Heights. You know, there's not a single classroom or closet or storage area in the building that isn't filled to the gills, and it's not for lack of organization. It is a growing student population and, and a somewhat unpredictable student population year over year. And the building simply does not have the capacity to safely house everybody and to do so in a way that's really conducive to, to learning. The kindergarten class, we've got one kindergarten class, for example, and it's thirty students. And this is over the recommended class size, and it's concerning too, because a lot of these kiddos are in a classroom setting for the very first time. There's thirty-five-year-olds of varying abilities and a wide variety of needs, and it's challenging under any circumstances to teach kindergarten. But cramming all these kids into one room for eight hours a day is not conducive to setting them up for success or becoming lifetime learners. And we are nowhere on any list for, you know, sort of systemic renovation or improvements, despite having what the county has recognized as a moderate degree of issues. And I don't think any parent feels great sending to their kid to a school that has that kind of designation. So we're not asking for the moon. We're only requesting a little more space and the addition of two to three modular classrooms. And yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome. Next, we have Kelly Richardson, PTSA Acting President, speaking on the Capitol Heights Elementary School building improvements. Welcome.
Good evening. Well, thank you for having me.
I don't know what you've done, Cindy. My apologies.
No problem. Thank you. Good afternoon to the Chair and to the members of the Board of Education. As stated, my name is Kelly Richardson. I'm the Acting President of the Capitol Heights Elementary School PTSA, and I am here on behalf of the parents, the teachers, and the students at Capitol Heights. So as my colleague in, in the PTSA mentioned, Capitol Heights is a phenomenal school. My children have been there. We've been there for the past five years. And as she mentioned, Capitol Heights has not undergone any systemic or major renovations to date. The classrooms are overcrowded, and the building in and of itself is in need of repair. Our students and our teachers work very hard for Capitol Heights to be the type of school that it is. It has been recognized multiple times. It has received multiple designations as an EGATE school, and the latest of which was awarded in two thousand and twenty-three. The school building, again, has not had any type of substantial renovation. We are in need. The first week of school, the electricity went out for over a day and a half affecting the HVAC system. There was no air, and the building reached temperatures of eighty-five degrees and up. It was hotter than that in the cafeteria and in the kitchen. Furthermore, Capitol Heights enrollment continues to increase year over year, and as Sarah mentioned, the classrooms are busting at the seams. We have children meeting in the library, children meeting in the faculty workroom, on the stage in the cafeteria, and most of these spaces are also used for storage where pests and rodents can reside. There are many urgent needs at Capitol Heights. However, as she mentioned, we're not asking for the moon. We're asking for a safe and welcoming space for our children to learn, and where parents feel confident for their children to go to school. Chess has not been prioritized, which is a dissatisfaction to many, and they have not received any type of real renovation. What we're asking for now is the repair of the HVAC and to improve air circulation. We're asking for the installation of solar panels. It's a priority. It will help with climate resiliency. We're also asking for three temporary classrooms. It can be in the form of a swing space, modular classrooms. We have made this request previously, but to no avail, and there's ample space at Capitol Heights on the school grounds. Additionally, the bathrooms are a mess. They have old windows, pipes busting, water leaking regularly, and those need to be repaired. There's moldy ceiling tiles that need to be replaced, paint that is peeling, and I'm sure needs to be evaluated for asbestos. We are asking that the school grounds be updated immediately, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Portia Rochan, individual, speaking on the RFP's bid solicitation. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Portia Rochan. I own a small contracting company based in Prince George's County. I am a product of PG County Schools myself, and I currently have three children in the PGCPS system. I would like to thank you all for having me, have the opportunity to speak tonight, but I have a few questions and suggestions that I want to address. So my first question is, why does PGCPS not support or implement requirements and advantages in their RFPs and bid solicitations to include county-based businesses, county-based small businesses, and county-based minority business enterprises? The county has historically used a majority of prime and subcontractors who are based outside of the county when there are plenty of capable contractors within the county. Other PG County agencies have implemented requirements and advantages to PG County-based businesses, which keep our tax dollars in the county and helps build our local economy, instead of outsourcing to huge companies and mega developers that are not based here. My suggestion is that there should be a shortlist of county-based prime and subcontractors who get an opportunity to bid on projects that should not be outsourced outside of the county with companies who have no vested, vested interest in the county. My second point of concern is regarding Phase Two of the P-three initiative. The county decided to implement this initiative, which does give some opportunities and advantages to county-based businesses. However, the prime contractor coordinating this particular effort is based outside of this county, and they have sole discretion on who they choose to contract with. That surely seems like a conflict of interest where there is no oversight. I would like to make a suggestion that there be public solicitations for all county-based businesses to have an opportunity to bid on P-three projects on a public open, opening setting. Otherwise, all the other prime contractors' friends will get majority of, if not all, of the P-three contracts, which means that they can choose whoever they want to partner with on PGCPS P-three, P-three projects, even if they are not PGCPS businesses or PG County businesses, excuse me. We need to have these projects bid publicly in an open, public opening setting for transparency, and so that all small contractors like myself have a fighting chance, especially those that are within the county and have vested interest here. For two thousand and twenty-three, the District of Columbia, which has implemented some of the advantages that I'm suggesting tonight for their local small businesses, their economy operated with a four hundred and nineteen million dollar surplus. Meanwhile, over here in PG County, we are projected to operate at a deficit of a hundred and seven, a hundred and seventy-one million dollars. So I think it's, it's fair to say that we may want to pay attention to our neighbors over in DC. I would love to see PG County mimic the other Maryland counties, DC, as well as other county agencies that have supported the growth of local small minority businesses located within the county. Will you all support the local businesses, or are you all going to continue to push the jobs to contractors outside of the county? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we will have Janine Branch, Glendale Elementary School PTSA, speaking on Glendale's lack of water and temporary buildings. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Janine Branch, and I'm a parent and a member of the PTSA. I'm actually the Secretary of our PTSA. I'm here to highlight the urgent need for Glendale Elementary to be included in the Capital Improvement Plan. GDES serves five hundred students as Glendale's only neighborhood school, elementary school, and hosts a regional autism program, which has been a cornerstone of our community for fifteen years, and that includes eighty students in self-contained environments. Our aging infrastructure includes the continued use of the original two-room building that was built in nineteen twenty with, with expansions in nineteen forty-eight, nineteen sixty, and the last in two thousand, and that urgently needs our attention. First, the main building has twenty-two classrooms with additional ten in five temporary buildings. These trailers have been used for over two decades, present significant safety and accessibility concerns. Students, including some in the autism program, must navigate around the outside of the building in all weather conditions to access critical facilities such as restrooms, the cafeteria, and the nurse's office. The ongoing reliance on these trailers disrupts learning and raises safety concerns. While a security access panel has been suggest, suggested, it is a temporary fix and hasn't been implemented. The proper solution is to rebuild and merge all the classrooms into one main building and eliminate the trailer. Second, GDES has lacked access to potable water since the pandemic shutdown, with restoration contingent on the inspection for lead and other contaminants. The continued reliance on bottled water now in this fourth year since reopening is inadequate. Even if water testing occurs, replacing outdated pipes, some up to a hundred and four years old, is necessary. Also, the inability to prepare freshly-made meals due to the lack of potable water comprises nutrition, discourages healthy eating habits, and negatively affects students' overall well-being and academic performance. Additionally, we're concerned about the safety of our youngest students, who may inadvertently come into contact with contaminants when washing their hands. The temporary measures are appreciated, but we urgently need to address a permanent solution. In conclusion, I would like to request that the Board prioritizes Glendale, and I've only highlighted a snapshot about the, of the urgent needs that Glendale is facing, and we appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we are going to move to Deandre Witt, Glendale Elementary PTSA, speaking on improvements to Glendale Elementary. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Deandre Witt, and I am the President of the Glendale Elementary School PTSA. And, you know, good evening to all the members of the Board. I stand here before you today, not just as a PTSA leader, I'm also a concerned parent, as I have a second grader in the self-contained autism program that Ms. Secretary just identified at Glendale Elementary. I'll stick to one issue, and this is a critical issue that Ms. Secretary just outlined, and it's the outdated water system. She identified that our kids can't drink safely from the water fountains. They have to drink bottled water, and that's not a sustainable or ideal solution. But, you know, Glendale has some positive aspects in that, again, it's a center for the county for children with autism, like my son, and other kids who are just like him, who actually need that hand up or that, you know, that help the Glendale Elementary provides. So it's a vital resource in our community. As a healthcare professional myself, you know, I understand, you know, what non-potable water can do to young children. And, you know, studies have shown that it could lead to develop mental delays, learning disabilities, behavioral problems, all the things that, you know, we are trying to avoid, you know, with our children. And, you know, we know that even low levels of lead in, you know, a child's blood can affect their focus, their IQ, their behavior, and it's just not something that we can gamble with. So I'll be brief, and I just want to reiterate what Ms. Secretary just, you know, identified as well, is that we urge you guys to prioritize this and part of your Capital Improvement Plan. With over a hundred-year pipes, we have to make sure that this is not an issue. The kids that wash their hands, kids that drink water, are not putting their health and their safety at risk, as well as the staff that's there as well. Uh, so it's not just a matter of convenience, it's a health issue, and I want to, you know, reiterate that it's a health issue as well as a capital improvement issue. So I thank you for your time, and uh I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Um, next we'll move to Adam Brown, Individual, speaking on the school conditions in the area. Welcome. Mr. Brown, are you present? Uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick, can you just check to see if he's still online, please? Oh, so Adam Brown has raised his hand. Um, if I'll move forward.
I just promoted him. Oh, sorry. I just promoted him back. He should be coming back.
And you know who else? If you just take a, let me just check one second. Is there a Mendez who came before? No. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Witt? Uh, no, not Mr. Witt. I'm sorry. Mr. Brown? You're on mute. Welcome. You're on mute.
Alright, sorry about that. Good evening. Um, I'm um speaking just to advocate uh for Capitol Heights Elementary School. Uh, my name is Adam. I'm a proud father of a young daughter. It's in fourth grade at at Capitol Heights Elementary. And the main thing I want to let the board, uh, or inform the board is um looking at the Prince George County's uh gifted and excellent um schools for elementary, uh elementary schools. Um, you have Capitol Heights, you have Longfield, and you have Greenbelt. And when you combine that with uh the the number of students that are uh the county is seeking for each school, the uh total, the minimum uh population. Um, Capitol Heights is the uh only school that um has not uh met that uh the number that's um looking, and a big part of that is due to the um facility. Um, I'm very glad to read that um in the um that Longfield is uh being um planned for renovation in the next uh five years. Uh, just want to add that uh Capitol Heights Elementary should be looked into as well. Uh, my daughter has been there for two years, and in those two years, they've had a major uh HVAC problem just recently. The uh AC unit uh completely failed and um had to uh come in uh retrieve my daughter early due to the uh immense heat. And the facility is an older building, and it would just be really nice for that building to be uh renovated along. Uh, it seemed like it's a long time coming, and um especially as a school that's been winning uh multiple awards for uh gifted excellence. It should um, we should match that uh performance with um uh better facility. So uh that's uh just, that's uh just all I wanted to say, and um hope we uh keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Right. Thank you.
Absolutely. There are no other registered live testimonies that are present. The written and video recorded public comments are as follows. Written. Maverick Bravo, student, improvement on the Bowie High School HVAC installation in the gym. Brandon Buckner, student, accessibility and safety at Bowie High School. Dayami Soto, student, air conditioning in Bowie High's um high school's gym. Lamont Corey, student, improvement in school bathrooms. Marshall Barnes, student, upgrades at Frederick Douglass High School. Griffin Barnes, student, upgrades at Frederick Douglass High School. Jada Joyner, student, Bowie High School air conditioning HVAC. Jamian Carroll, student, Bowie High School air conditioning HVAC. Christopher Lester, student, improvements to the twenties and forties basement at Bowie's High School. Destiny Nikaya, student, repairs at Bowie High School. Hassan Khan, student, repairs at Bowie High School. Azelia Aguilera, individual, capital improvement at John Bane Elementary School. Shalay Purdue, individual, improvements to the bus routes. Dr. Heather Anglin, individual, mold growth and lack of ambient classroom temperature. Kelly Barnes, individual, capital improvement plan twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-one with a concentration on Frederick Douglass High School. Safa Mosold, Glendale Elementary School, PTA, urgent need for GDES to be included in the capital improvement plan without further delay. Cheryl Lee, individual. Improvement needed at Frederick Douglass High School. Charles R. Moore, Junior, individual, adding John Hanson Montessori in the next phase. Clara Alsa, individual, funding for school buildings for International High School at Langley Park be returned to the CIP. Marvin Mohammed, individual, bigger and new high schools at Bowie. Latoya Reed, individual, HVAC system for the Bowie High School's gym. John Prescott, individual, improvement with bus and stop finder. Cheryl Johnson, individual, improvements at Laurel High School. Gerard Yabo, CTE, impacts of current data on students in the CTE program. Adrian Phillips Taylor, individual, high school, High Point High School, improvements in functioning water fountains at school. Mary R. Fosnet, individual, Bowie High School admin building improvements. Delvin Champagne, Dora Kennedy French Immersion Legislative Committee, leaving, uh, one second. I'm sorry, guys. I will. Um, alright, where were we? Um. Okay, Delvin Champagne, apologies. Dora Kennedy French Immersion Legislative Committee, leaving DKFI out of my school relocation plan. Nelson Villator, individual, capital proposal to improve the building's security, technology, and staff involvement. Kelsey Bowen, individual, Bowie High School capital improvement projects. Cheryl McKinney, individual, Bowie High School main and NX improvements. Sabongao W. Micaea, individual, special needs facilities. Dr. Rosina Ruder, individual, improvements at Frederick Douglass High School. Casey York, individual, are there any plans to redistrict or utilize other methods to try to address overcrowding? Keegie Manti Miller, individual, moving Capitol Heights Elementary School to the top priority list for capital improvements. Teresa Smith, individual, ADA compliance and solutions for people with disabilities. Gladys Lacero, individual, improvements at Glendale Elementary School. Dr. Catherine M. McCavige, individual, updates and renovations to Capitol Heights Elementary School as part of your capital improvement plan. Alita Jerry Carter, Fall Equity Access LLC, capital programs to include transition schools, classrooms with the provision of sensory-friendly areas and calming spaces in a percentage of each school created and accessibility, and include plans for each new classroom and renovations for current schools. Kayulani Ivory Akon, individual, infrastructure needs at Capitol Heights Elementary School. Bolon Lee, Collejo, individual, complete renovation of the school at Capitol Heights Elementary School. Giovanna Cartagna, individual and ren- individual, um renovations needed for CHES for capital improvement program. Tyrone Masonberg, individual, improvements at Frederick Douglass High School. Camila House, Maya Angelou, French Immersion, parent and PTSA advocate. Anita Boyd, individual, questions the plans for Potomac Landing Elementary Elementary School. Sarah Gami, Bowie High School, PTSO, lack of HVAC system in the main campus gymnasium. Rashawnwa Alfred, individual, upgrades at Dora Kennedy French Immersion School. Christian Vareen, individual, Bowie High School, lack of air conditioning. Esther Ber- Berry, Bari. Judith P. Hoyer, PTSA, where Hoyer is in the capital improvement, where is Hoyer in the capital improvement program? Can we have a response on the expansion of our school? Candace Perkins, a registered speaker, has now joined the Zoom, and we will hear from her now. Frederick Douglass High School, PTSO President, speaking on Frederick Douglass High School's HVAC and school renovation status. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Candace Perkins, a proud District Nine resident, born and raised in PG CPS school system. A mother of three, parent of a class twenty twenty-five senior, a wife, and a proud alumni of Frederick Douglass High School. Tonight, I come before you representing the entire beloved yet always forgotten about FDHS community that was built in nineteen fifty-nine. As the President of the FDHS PTSO, I stand before you tonight in twenty twenty-four requesting the FY twenty-six thirty-one CIP be inclusive of the following basic needs of the scholars of F- at FDHS. One, reevaluate the pre-pandemic utilization data from the twenty seventeen Educational Facilities Master Plan. This plan reported sixty-six percent utilization with above-average facility condition score and below score for adequacy. The outdated information will have a negative impact on post-pandemic enrollment. We are not where we once were. Number two, upgrade the FDHS from its current cycle-three phase and prioritize the cycle-one, which will create the fully-funded phase plan for the complete remodeling of Frederick Douglass High School. Number three, replace the HVAC in the two gyms and flooring. There is no air conditioning in the gyms. There are floor fans circulating seasonal air. This has been a longstanding issue. Fans are a temporary solution, but why hasn't the county saw uh a permanent solution? Number four, actually begin the renovation of the longstanding overdue stadium upgrade and fire alarm replacement. This project has been promised to our school for over two years. It seems as if everyone in the county knows how amazing the scholars, faculty, and staff are, except the PG CPS decision-makers that control our funding resources. Rank number six in PG County by USA News dot com, FDHS has a ninety-three percent graduation rate. Two highly competitive and sought-out specialty programs, the IB and PTAC Dual Enrollment Program. This year, projected enrollment is over eleven hundred scholars. Students are actively transferring into Frederick Douglass High School because of the dynamic community we've created. Frederick Douglass High School is a two-way school competing with four A schools in both athletics and academics. So I come to you tonight and ask you to show up for our scholars. Please turn these quote-unquote plans, the stadium upgrade, new dance floor, HVAC control upgrade, new running track and fire alarm replacement into actions and fund our school's needs. I suggest you truly consider the longstanding issues and include Frederick Douglass High School in the twenty-six thirty-one CIP. Our community is long overdue for change and is worth more than just championship ring photo ops. I look forward to further follow-up and conversations. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Um, we have no video testimony tonight. The comments that you've heard tonight, um and those that were sent in can be found by navigating to the Prince George's County Board Docs page, which can be directly found at www.gobboardsdoc.com. Go dot B-O-A-R-D-D-O-C-S dot com. Thank you to the public commenters for your input tonight. The CIP administrative team will take your comments under advisement as they plan the final CIP for twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-one. The time is now six forty-four PM, and the Prince George's County Board of Education hearing is adjourned. Have a great night.